Welcome everyone to the Papillion City Council Meeting Tuesday, November 18th, 2014. I'd like to have a clerk take the role if you would please.
Lawrence, Mom Guard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Here. Just to mention, the election was quite difficult for the mayor, you could tell because he's a lot grayer, a lot heavier than he used to be. The roll call, you may have noticed there's a couple of council people missing for all the students that are here tonight. The council people aren't here either have family commitments or, in most times, work commitments, as is the case with Mayor Black. The city council president usually fills in as acting mayor when he's not present, so that's why you're stuck with me tonight. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we have a bunch of scouts in the audience, if they come standing right up here in front of me, I'd appreciate it to lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we get started, what troop are you guys from, or what pack?
463.
463? Where's that out of? Which, like, a school or?
Kerry Hill.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, alright. Okay. Alright, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, you guys will lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance, to comply, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys, guys, come up here, I have something for you. Come back. Next item on the agenda, we have an affidavit.
That is correct.
Thank you. We have a current copy of the Open Meeting Act posted in the city council chambers, if anyone would care to look at it. No proclamations or oaths of offices today, but we do have several presentations. I'll ask Lori Hanson, Recreation Department Director, to join me for the first one. Well, as many of you may know, we have a great many businesses in Papillion that sponsor many of our events the city is involved in. With these businesses being so generous with their donations, we're able to provide a great number of programs, services, that we might not otherwise. To give you an example of how extensive it is, we have thirty sponsors this year, it grows every year, thirty business sponsors that have contributed money to sponsor forty events that probably would not exist otherwise. Of those forty events, I should tell you too, we're talking in the neighborhood of money and other donations around sixty-eight thousand dollars. So it's not any small amount, and it's what makes Papillion as good as we are, because we have businesses that are willing to step forward and help the community put on these events. To give you a couple of examples, the Subtory Amphitheater, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, this past year provided ten thousand people with access to shows for free that wouldn't exist otherwise. Lori and her team do a great job with all of these events, including numerous road races, biking events, where we draw people from all over the United States, and we can get positive comments all the time. So, on behalf of the city, Lori would like to present some of our sponsors that are here tonight with a small token of our appreciation for all the work that you do and all that you're willing to contribute to make this a great community. So with that, will I read off your name if you'd come forward, I would appreciate it? Okay. Christopher Matthews from Allegiant Health. From Shimmer and Associates, Matt Sutton. Thank you, Matt. From the Plain Times, our old friend Sean Barronclaw, saw him back there hiding somewhere. I don't get to say that often. From Tobacco Free Sharpy, am I going too fast, Lori? Okay. McKissie Mulroy.
Thank you.
McKissie just gave us an award this month, Tobacco Free Sharpy. We just got an award for outstanding outdoor recreation facility for Tobacco Free Sharpy for 2014.
Congratulations. Thank you. From Strong Box Storage, Amber Zaccaris. Thank you, Amber. And from TD Square, Doug Dreesen. Thank you, Doug. Foot and ankle specialist, Dr. Chad Summing. Thank you, doctor. From Shadow Lake Hy-Vee, where I go much dropping, Joe Stubaka. And from KB's Food Shop, Progressive PT, Neil Luther, and his wife, Pearl. Thank you both. And representing Bellino Fireworks, Vince Bellino. Thanks, Vince. And for Black Hills Energy, Kevin Jarros. And from Papillion Judy Women's Club, Mary Sporsak. And last but not least, Dingman's Collision, Boyd Dingman. Thank you, Boyd. Please join me in giving all of these fine sponsors a... Well, see, he can give me a new list, and I'm old.
And then we got Ryan.
Oh. Papillion Saints Club, I'm sorry, Ryan. And Pinnacle Bank is also here, thank you. Brad Eckoff, from Pinnacle?
Brad, first.
You're Chris, okay. You're much better representative, anyway. So did we get everybody? Alright, please applaud, give everybody some round of applause. Next presentation is from Phil Tackett, Mayor's Youth Council.
Hi, everyone. This is the first time seeing this, so I call the eyes if I'm not completely... Yeah, a lot of activities this fall. Yeah, sorry. One of the things that we participated in was the sobriety checkpoint, which I personally was not at, but apparently it was a lot of fun. They had to stay overnight, and they just logged in with, like, they got to see what a policeman did, and, yeah. Apparently it was a lot of fun, yeah. And this is them at that event. The Summit Memorial Library Kids Art Expo I was at, and I participated in, like, a weave-type thing. We had a lot of different things, like, we had another, like, cardboard art-type thing, and, like, animal prints, and we had a lot of kids come up, and they had a lot of fun there. I would have liked this if I was their age, because I liked art. Last year it was really snowy, and this year it was, like, beautiful weather, so it was perfect for this. And here's some pictures of that. We have, like, one of those, like, swirly, like, art things, you know, where they, like, spin the thing? Yeah, I had the weaving thing, and a lot of other things went on. We had the employee appreciation picnic, also known as the Fall Festival. We loaded the pumpkins onto a trailer, and then we went for a short, like, hay rack ride before we actually set them up. I got my face painted, and then that was, like, their practice, I guess, and so they painted faces for the rest of the time. Then there was a bounce house, and those were always a lot of fun. Okay, Halloween Safe Night. If you can see me, I'm that, like, tiger in the upper right-hand corner. Pretty much all of the kids on the Mayor's Youth Council dressed up, so we're a little too old to be dressing up, so it's, like, fun for us to get this opportunity. We had more than enough candy this year. Usually we had to give them each, like, one piece of candy, but this year we had more than enough. Yeah, so we handed out candy at a hallway, and the kids had a safe place to go on Halloween. And here's more pictures of all the kids. A thousand six hundred and seventy-two kids came by our door, and we had enough candy for all of them. We hung up some posters around our hall that we made at a committee meeting before that, and that was also good, and so then they knew what kind of cause we were, because there, you know, there was, like, Key Club and all the other stuff there, Leo Club, I think. So, thank you for supporting the Mayor's Youth Council. We really do have a lot of fun at these events, like, everyone's smiling and laughing, and, like, the people that come up to us and, like, say thank you to us, we really appreciate, like, helping them. Thanks a lot, guys.
Could you do me a favor and let the council know your name and what school you're with?
I'm Summer Stanton, President of the Mayor's Youth Council. And JT is here, too. He's on our lower council, and he's a new member, and I really appreciate that he came. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is JT Pyle. I go to Papillion La Vista High School. I was there at that Halloween Safe Night, and that was a lot of fun, and it was a lot of fun to see everybody smiling, and just the little amount that we do, I've noticed, helps a lot with lives, so thank you.
I'm from Papillion La Vista South High School, and this year we have a lot more Papillion La Vista High School students, like our Vice President and Secretary, Haley Roseman Krista Rawl. Yeah, thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you. I do appreciate the fact that we're getting more ballots between the schools represented, and I want to thank you on behalf of the city council for all the fine work you guys do and all the services you provide us. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, from Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation, Kevin Jarros is here to give us a third quarter report. Kevin?
My name is Kevin Jarros, and I am with Black Hills Energy. That is my real job. I'm also on the Sharpy County Economic Development Board of Directors, and tonight I'm happy to be here to give you a third quarter report. I also have handouts that I'll give you after the report that's a little different than the actual presentation. The first slide, it talks about 2013 U.S. Census, and you'll see where Sharpy County increased by 6.6 percent, ten thousand four hundred and ninety-one people. So you can see that that's quite influential, and also the, kind of puts us at the third largest county in the state now. This also is the city's population from the census, and you can see on the far right-hand side, from 2010 to 2013, how much each city within Sharpy County has grown, and you can see Papillion has grown 16 percent. This is the next, the net taxable sales within Sharpy County, and it also has it by city. And you can see on the far, far right, the second quarter 2014 and the second quarter 2013, the increases, and you can see in 2014 second quarter, we've seen a $27 million increase from 2013, the second quarter, and as of July 2014, 11 million. So, and you can see where Gretna is highlighted, and that's probably, most of that comes from the mall that's out there. So, 2014, eight hundred and eighty-six million dollars, an 83 million dollar increase from 2013, so significant increase. This here just talks about the new starts, retail businesses throughout the Sharpy County. I won't list them all, the handout that I have will show these as well. I guess the main thing is that, you know, we're seeing new starts, so that's a good And these are additional new starts within the, within Sharpy County. Some of these you might recognize here in Papillion. Here on the next taxable sales, it's just kind of, it's just kind of redundant of what I just said about the eight hundred and eighty-six million dollars. You can see where we're at today, an 83 million dollar increase from last year, and you can see right now we're doing well, and we're going to continue to do well throughout the This is the permit valuations throughout Sharpy County, and it also depicts the various cities that are within Sharpy County. And you can see here that we have seen a slight decrease in permit valuations from 2013, about three million dollars. And you can see throughout 2014 third quarter, recording all the way back from 2006, where there was 140 million. So you can just see that difference. And this is just the capital expenditures within Sharpy County on the new projects that have come in. I will not go over them again, but they're in your handout, but you can see on the far right, the valuations, square footage, as well as the community that they reside in. This is second slide for that. And this is a couple of new projects within Sharpy County. This is the new CNG fueling station out on Hilltop. It's a natural gas fueling station for vehicles and/or trucks, which is, I think, in Sharpy County, probably one of the first ones, so it's a good deal. Especially if you're near my business in Black Hills Energy, we like to see natural gas. That's MUD's station, but nevertheless, we still like to see the use of natural gas. This here is Grapple North America. The new building that you can see going up now, the Carpenters Union Training Center, which is, looks like a real nice building. Surgeons, or Sergeants Pet Care Products, and the City of Papillion's Public Works that's under construction. You can see here, they must have took this picture before the cold weather set in. I can still see leaves on the trees, so... And the RNDC distribution also. And these here are the top ten permitted projects within Sharpy County in 2014. You can see, number one, the Travelers is the data center that is just down Highway 50, which is quite substantial, 183,000 square feet, and the permit valuation was at 75 million dollars. And you can see just going through that, the various projects, square footage, and the permit valuations. Again, here, this is just depicting the permit valuation from 2014, 2004 to 2014. Assessed valuations, same thing, you can see that here, all the way from 2004 to 2013, an increase of 149 million dollars from 2012. If you know Toby Churchill, our Director of the Sharpy County, this is kind of his, a little bit of his humor in here, and I think he's trying to tell us that we're seeing some housing starts, not of this caliber, of course, but this is how he says that it's growing. Single-family housing permits, 2014, not a lot of variation, but you can see there's fifteen permits from the difference between 2013 and now. In Papillion, you can see, other than Sharpy County, Papillion is leading those single-family housing permits, which is no surprise with all the building that you see around in the area, so that's a good sign. Total single-family housing permits, 247 in the county, so that's a good deal. This is the single-family housing permits that have been issued since 2004 and up to 2014, and you can see overall they're down, 98 permits from September 2013. And here, this is the multifamily housing permits issued. You can see here, there's not a lot of action, and again, in Papillion, you can see where the most are at 48, kind of leading the charge there. But overall, in Sharpy County, you can see we're down. Single housing permits issued, this is kind of redundant to the slide that we just talked about, it just has it in a chart format. And here as well, this is the multifamily housing permits issued, again, it's just Well, these are the single housing platted lots, and you can see from, right now, 2014, we're down from 2013 a little bit, from plotted lots, about 160. And this slide here just depicts the labor statistics, and you can see the unemployment rate versus the employment rate from 2013 to, through August of 2014 as well. You can see the June 2013, August, so you can see those are down as well. All good signs. Again, this is one of Toby's, some of his humor. This here, this depicts, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see on one of the big projects, the Travelers projects on Highway 50 in Cape Art, and it just depicts that. It also depicts some of the OPPD's new substation, and a few other construction activities that are going on in that area, the cemetery, so some of those things, and it's just depicting that. You can see some of that growth going that way. It also shows the existing sewer. This is Sharpy County, a site development on the Highway 50 corridor, and you can see here just some of those sites, the Ross Sites, 140 acres, the Catholic Cemeteries, 70 acres, and Bellevue Industry, future 200 acres, and that's down on that Harlan Lewis Road, down there on the bottom, kind of in, between the La Platte and Bellevue there. And these are some major inquiries, the Sharpy County EDC, they're always getting inquiries, and these are some of the major inquiries, and it's just listed by construction type, housing, retail, that kind of thing. So you can see that in 2014, we've had less inquiries, a number of inquiries, and you can also tell that most of those inquiries are in manufacturing and research and development. This is, we partner with the Omaha Chamber as a partner, and we utilize those resources that the Omaha Chamber has as well, and the overall, the greater Omaha area, you can see from 2014 to 2013 is up overall 20, 21 percent. And then what's also good is you have those inquiries, but you also have those visits that actually come and visit you, but, and you can see those are down a little bit. This is just the Sharpy County Manufacturing Prospect inquiries, and you can see that a lot of these, when they inquire, they don't tell you who they are, they're just checking it out, their inquiring is basically all they're doing, so a lot of times we provide them information, and we don't even know who they are, for sure. We just know maybe what type of business, and you can see here, we've had some ag business manufacturing, some equipment manufacturing, some food processing. So you can see here that we would build, have built a suit, 250,000 acres to 300,000 acres and up, and you can see where there'd be 300 jobs. So you can see that there's a lot of activity in Sharpy County. Again, here's some call service data centers, you know, we already have two in Sharpy County, we have more that are looking. It's kind of, it's kind of like, you know, that when you build it, they come, so they've seen where, they've had some good success with others, and we have others that are looking. So you can see here that that's a good thing, they need a lot of space, 100 acres plus. And then we also have a back office that they're looking at, 100,000 acres, and that's about 500 jobs. And that's all that I have to report to you tonight, and be happy to answer a few questions. If not, have a good evening.
The council, I really question for Kevin. Thank you, Kevin, appreciate the information. And one of our most anticipated items on the agenda, the City Administrator's Report, Mr. Hoynes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Getting my report, see, I mean, you did see a picture that Mr. Jarros provided of the public works facility. A couple of weeks ago, I took a site visit, actually, to two of our major projects, one of them's winding down almost complete. The ground-level storage, which if you go look at it, doesn't look so ground-level, it's some 30 feet in the air, that holds, how many million gallons of water? Five million gallons of water, it's in southwest Summit Ridge, in the Summit Ridge subdivision. You know, 10 years ago, we predicted that we would need that, and that water tower's almost complete, and that's really going to be providing the water to all of that new developing, development you see along the Highway 370 corridor, somewhere between four or five million dollar project, and again, just doing some final things on that. Also, the public works facility, if any of you are interested, I'm sure Marty would give you a hard hat and take you on a tour, it's really unique to start seeing some of the things take shape from the planning phases that some of us have been involved in for over 10 years, you can actually start to see where some office spaces are, but it is just at the halfway point. It's scheduled for delivery mid-June of the upcoming year. Marty said, yeah, he said that we're going to have the police department manage Papillion days, because we're going to be moving into our new facility that week, so he might still do that, but, so if you're ever interested, council members, in, you know, an up-close-and-personal visit, you know, I found it very interesting to go in and see, it's going to be a very nice facility. A couple of other administrative things, on December, or before December 1st, we'll exchange initial... exchange initial offers with the FOP, that's the police union. That will mean that we'll have all three of our collective bargaining labor union contracts in negotiation, represents about 80 percent of our 180 or so employees. I've had a couple of official meetings, and, you know, things I anticipate will go well. I did send you an email, and a handful of you were able to make it to the Veterans Day Celebration, well, not a Papillion-specific event. We had, one of our own is the keynote speaker, Mike Newsel, and for any of you that may come around City Hall occasionally, you would make a mistake, because you would think that there's the janitor for the building. His humble demeanor, as he walks around and serves all of us each day. What you'd find out is that, you know, Mike holds a master's degree in forestry from college, he's a two-time Purple Heart Vietnam recipient, and again, one of the best servants we have in city government, and he did an excellent job of telling his military story, and tried to get some of that up online, at least through the city website, for those of you that weren't able. So not only Mike, just any of our city folks who have served, I think it was, they had almost 500 people at the event, so it was really a cool event. It was notified yesterday, actually, by Chairman Dick Kimball, Civil Service, we received 40 applications for the police chief, police chief position. The commission has culled that list down to six semifinalists. They're going to do their last phase of testing in mid-December, and that will take the six finalists, semifinalists, to three finalists. And they anticipate, the commission, then by state statute, submits the name of the three most qualified candidates to Mayor Black for consideration. Excuse me, Mayor Black will then spend a few weeks interviewing and analyzing and doing background on those three candidates, probably sometime in early February, he'll bring his selection up to the council for confirmation to be the, excuse me, city's next police chief. As y'all know, Chief Luce is in the process of retiring. He's still around, we do see him during the day a lot, but he, his last day will be, I think, January 2nd or 3rd, and he'll be using some leave, and I think his actual last date's the 1st of March or so, as we come in, but get a chance to see Chief Luce before then. Last thing, I really didn't plan on saying this, because I didn't know she was going to attend the meeting tonight, but a few seats to my right, it says Nancy Hypes, but it's Robin Hofseth, raise your hand, Robin. Robin says, what are you doing calling me out here? For those of you that don't know Robin, have had the pleasure of working with her, seems like we're doing this way too often, too, on the side of age of our city staff, Robin will be retiring at the end of the month. She's had 14 years with the City of Papillion. I think she had, how many years were you with Alliance, Robin? Six, so over 20-year service, and Nancy would be the first to tell you, I mean, Mayor Black proudly proclaims the stability and the finances in the City of Papillion. And Nancy would willingly tell you that much of that is to her staff's credit, Nancy has her foot on the wheel, Robin and her folks are the engine, and so, Robin, just public thank you to you, and good luck in retirement, and enjoy those grandkids. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Also, thank you, Robin, for all your, all your service to the city. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is C1, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Clug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Florence. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yes, I'd like to remove item C5 from the consent agenda.
Okay, C5 will be removed from the consent agenda, and we'll discuss that before item D. With that removal, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion?
Five VAs, no NAs.
Now we'll discuss C5, Mr. Mumgarth. I should mention, quickly, C5 is Resolution R140185, which is a resolution to approve a local agreement between Douglas County and the City of Papillion for crime lab services. Sorry, Mr. Mumgarth, grant.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion, Mr. Mumgarth, second by Councilmember Clug.
I have a couple of questions, and perhaps the Police Department can help us on this. Okay, now, this is, as I understand it, this is a renewal from the existing agreement?
Yes.
Okay, can you explain to us why we have an agreement with Douglas County for crime lab services? How often are we using this? What's it costing us? Just explain a little bit what's going on here.
Well, this agreement is something that has been in place, they're done in five-year increments. This, it renews a 2009 agreement, there is no cost increases from that agreement, no changes to that agreement. It's used quite often, they're one of the best as far as forensic services, whether it be any kind of homicide or burglary, they'll show up, they'll assist in gathering evidence, photographies, things of that nature.
Okay, now, I want to, sometime back, we had some discussion about cooperation with Douglas County. This is an example of cooperation with a neighboring county.
Yes, this is just a cooperative agreement.
Okay, we had some discussion about cooperation with Douglas County for 911 services, and I'll leave it to Mr. Hoynes or the Police Department, whichever, to answer this, but that discussion, I was very much in favor of that. Now, that discussion involves some cooperation from Sarpy County also, and it kind of stalled out. And I, if you, I guess initially, I want to know, what if any relation does this cooperation agreement with Douglas County have with our prospects of getting a cooperation agreement for 911 services?
Yes, Mr. Mumgarth, there's no direct correlation between the two, they're two separate agreements, two separate functions, they're related in terms of, they're both public safety functions. One is only, as Lieutenant Widded explained, on an as-needed basis. Certainly, the 911 was a much larger discussion, it employed a couple of studies and showed some substantial savings over time, and the Sarpy County Commissioners have elected at this point to pursue what is a virtual consolidation with Douglas County, basically technological, but no staff savings. There's still discussion on the table, Sarpy County's hired a new 911 director in the last couple of months. Douglas County also had a failed bond issue that included some upgrades, so, while we have a seat at the table, we don't really have a vote, but we have always encouraged and advocated for a joint 911, because you articulated, we believe there's substantial savings there. My guess is after the 1st of the year, when the director gets his feet under the ground in Sarpy County, that some of those talks will be revisited.
Okay, and this, getting into this agreement won't have any adverse then impact and hurt us in the future if we want to go with that agreement?
None whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to second, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any further council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five VAs, no NAs.
The next item on the agenda is item D1, which is ordinance 1706, which is an ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the City of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described Lot 1, Sec. Clubical Parish, together with lots 23, 24B, 25, 26, 27, 28B, and lots A through F, inclusive Terre Heights, both subdivisions of Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corridor of 84th Street and 6th Street, from R2, which is single-family residential medium-density, and R3, urban-family residential, to R3, which is urban-family residential, to amend the official zoning map of the City of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 205-32 Papillion Municipal Code, and to provide for an effective date thereof. Is there a council member that would introduce it?
I don't have a list.
Introduced by Councilmember Clug, thank you. Next item is item D2, which is ordinance 1707, which is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Highway Allocation Fund Pledge Refunding Bonds Series 2014 of the City of Papillion, in the principal amount of not to exceed $5,400,000, for the purpose of refunding, together with funds on hand, $1,565,000 outstanding principal amount of Highway Allocation Fund Pledge Bonds Series 2008, dated, or dated November 25, 2008, and $3,760,000 outstanding principal amount of Highway Allocation Fund Pledge Bonds Series 2009, dated May 28, 2009, all of which bonds were issued for the purpose of paying the cost of constructing certain streets of the city, prescribing the form of such bonds, pledging funds to be received by the city from the State of Nebraska Highway Allocation Fund for the payment of such bonds, providing for the levy and collection of taxes to pay the same, if necessary, providing for the sale of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, and providing for the disposition of bond proceeds, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form. For the council's information, Bruce Lefler, our Bond Counsel from Ameritas, is here, should you have any questions. I might also add, this bond refunding saves more than $80,000 to the city. So, with that, will a council member introduce? The staff, as you well know, many times we have to waive second, third reading, or asked to, in order to lock in the rates for the bonds, so the staff is requesting that as well this time, so I'd like to have a motion to waive second, third readings for ordinance 1707. Motion by Councilman Florence.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clug. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? If not, please vote to waive the second, third readings. Oh, yeah, I got it. I vote aye also.
Six, six VAs, zero NAs.
We now need a motion to approve ordinance 1707. Someone makes that motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clug. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Six VAs, no NAs.
Next item is item D3, which is ordinance 1708, which is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation flood control refunding bonds. Flood control refunding bonds of the City of Papillion, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed $1,300,000, for the purpose of refunding $1,210,000 of general obligation flood control bonds, Series 2009, directing the application of the proceeds of said bonds, prescribing the form of said bonds, providing for the levy and collection of taxes to pay the same, providing for the sale of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form. And again, Bruce Lefler's here for Ameritas, everybody has any questions? Can I have a council member introduce 1708?
I agree with that.
Introduced by Mr. Jaworski. Again, the staff's recommending waiver of second, third reading, in order to lock in the rate, and this also requires a supermajority vote. So, I, I'm sorry? Motion to waive second, third reads by Councilmember Clug, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Florence. Any proponents? Any opponents? Any further council discussion? If not, please vote.
Six VAs, no NAs.
The next thing is a motion to approve ordinance 1708. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilmember Clug, second. Second by Councilman Glover. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Six VAs, no NAs.
Thank you. Mr. Hoynes, could you tell us what savings that vote, just the matter to?
Those two votes, there's a net present value of about a $580,000 savings for those two refinances, so, good catch by the fiscal agent and the finance department.
Thank you, Dan. Next item on the agenda is F1, which is ordinance 1702, which is an ordinance to amend the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill, which was adopted on September 2nd, 2014, by ordinance 1697, to appropriate subs for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1702? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second. By Councilman Mumgarth. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five VAs, no NAs.
Next item is F2, which is Resolution R140177, which is a request to approve a release or easement for a portion of the northeast outfall sewer located within Settlers Creek. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution R140177? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilmember Clug. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five VAs, no NAs.
Item F3, Resolution R140178, which is a resolution to approve a revision of the Papillion Fire Department's automatic aid agreement with the Bellevue Fire Department. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140178? Motion by Councilmember Clug. Second by Councilman Florence. Any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five VAs, no NAs.
Item F4 is Resolution R140179, which is a resolution to approve an agreement with the Lincoln Fire and Rescue for the Papillion Fire Department to be a participating agency of Nebraska Task Force One. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140179? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any further council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five VAs, no NAs.
Item F5, which is Resolution R140180, it's a resolution to approve applications for the 2014 winter fireworks season, which you recall is from December 29 through December 31. And we have three applicants, Bleezer Fireworks, Papillion Spirit Football, and Echo Softball, and these are all included on one ordinance, so it will require one vote for all three. I need a motion to approve Resolution R140180.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Florence. Any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five VAs, no NAs.
Item F6 is a resolution R140181, is a resolution to call Highway Fund Pledge Bonds Series 2008 for redemption. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140181? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second. Second by Councilman Glover. Are there any opponents, or proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? If not, please vote. Item F7.
Five VAs, no NAs.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I get in too big a hurry, I want to get out of here, huh? Item F7, which is Resolution R140182, which is a resolution to call Highway Fund Pledge Bonds Series 2009 for redemption, is there a motion to approve Resolution R140182? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second. Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Florence. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five V's, no N's.
Item F8 is Resolution R140183, a resolution to call general obligation flood control bonds Series 2009 for redemption. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140183?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clug. Any proponents? Opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five V's, no N's.
I don't believe there's any committee reports, is there? I don't think any committees are met, which takes us to any comments from the floor. I see we have, before I get to the comments of the mayor and council, I see we have a lot of students in the crowd, or they were here. Are they still here? Or did they leave?
They got their class dismissed.
Oh, there's one left. You're the only one left. Well, good. You have the privilege of coming up to the podium and tell us who you are and what class you're with.
Come on, guys.
Oh, there's two. Oh, come on. Come on up. Come on up.
My name's Caitlin Fiala, and I'm from Mr. Keller's fifth hour honors government class.
Thank you.
My name's Ryan Haruska. I'm from Mr. Keller's first hour American Government class.
I'm Christian Jasper from SCUD Catholic, and this is for my AP Gov class.
My name is Joe Devlin. This is for an AP Government class at SCUD Catholic.
Is there any other students? Don't be shy. Thank you for coming forward. We appreciate all of you being there, or being here for the meeting. If you have any questions of any of us, I'm sure there'll be a few of us staying back after the meeting. If you need to ask, or say, we need to sign anything for you, or whatever the case may be, please don't hesitate to ask. Are there any council comments?
You did a good job, Mr. Keller.
Yeah, okay, yeah. There was an awful lot of reading, so my eyes hurt. No council comments? Not, Mr. Mumgarth? You don't have nothing to comment upon? Okay. On behalf of Mayor Black, I'm going to inform the council and citizens of some things from his calendar. Mayor Black and Nancy Hypes, our Finance Director, participated in a conference call regarding the city's bond rating, which is very good, by the way. Mayor Black attended an Urban Affairs Committee hearing regarding LR555, regarding services to SIDs. Mayor Black also met with Tim Linderman to discuss the Veterans Park project for a grant application, and if any of you are familiar with Veterans Park, we're putting in, I am one of the sponsors of it, please donate and participate. Mayor Black attended Veterans Day dinner hosted by the LaVista Community Foundation. Mayor Black and Dan Hoynes met with Officer Phil Tackett and the parents of two mayor's youth leadership council members who are attending the National League of Cities Congress of Cities event. And finally, Mayor Black attended a meeting of the Employee Discussion Group regarding the mindset survey results. Just mentioned a couple of last items real quick before we leave. I just want to remind everybody that on Sunday, November 29th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., is our Winter Wonderland kickoff, where we light all the Christmas lighting, and there's carriages rides, and there's food, and we had, I think last year, we had about 2,000 people attend. It's right here by Sub-Library. Robin's here tonight, and also right here in front of City Hall at 3rd Street. I'd encourage you to attend. Last year, it was beautiful weather. We just hope by the 29th, we'll have some. But please participate. It's a fun event for everybody.
Chili?
Oh, yeah, thank you for reminding me. At Downtown Fire Station, they're going to have a chili contest, and also from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., there's a chili feed. $5 for adults or kids, $600 free, and occasionally, some of us on the council judge the chili contest. Let's see, something new this year, there's a cart ride, which will load in front of the Papillion Community Foundation on East 2nd Street, so make sure you participate. I think you have a good time. Be glad you did. Last thing I'll mention is, the Personnel Committee of the city is November 17th through November 21st, are taking in extra coats, clothes, boots, or any warm hats that you may not, may no longer have a need for, anything, blankets, boots, anything like that. The collection locations are City Hall, the Sub-Library, the Police Station, the Public Works Building. If you want more information about that, and would like to participate, I'm sure it's on our city website. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. The Boy Scouts came up earlier for the pledge allegiance. Can we have the Boy Scouts come up and tell us your name and what troop or pack you're with? Thanks, Tom. I'd forgotten that.
Just right.
Hello, my name is Gordon Lidle, and I'm from Troop 463.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Preister. I'm from Pack 463.
My name is.
My name is Nate Willard. I'm from Pack 463.
My name is Prester.
Pack 463.
My name is Ben Ebsen, and I'm from Pack 463.
My name is Peyton Thurman. I'm from Troop 463.
My name's Cole Johnson. I'm from Troop 463.
My name is Damon Littleman Jr., and I'm from Pack 463.
My name is Logan Repaul. I'm from Pack 463.
I'm Christian Blair. I'm from Pack 463.
I'm Alex Downey. I'm from Pack 463.
I'm Connor Parker. And I'm from Pack 63.
I'm Kyle Pelletier from 463.
I'm Torey Pelletier from 463.
I'm still Ryan Haruska, and I'm from Troop 463.
We definitely had a side description as you went through there. Thank you all for being here and helping us with the pledge, and Scouts, you're always welcome here. You know that. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Jaworski, second. Second by Councilwoman Glover. Please vote.
Five V's, no N's.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.